Good morning, welcome to the June 25th County Commission meeting. And we have, remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are available in the folder next to Commissioner Kelly. And we have listening devices available with Robert in the front row. If you need to use one, you could just talk with him.
Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of June 18th, 2013.
Move the minutes.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $698,277.61.
Pay the bills with a comment.
Second.
Motion is second with a comment. Commissioner Barth?
Today's bills include $150,000 for correct care, $50,000 for fuel in the highway department, and $177 for Metro 911.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
There are no reports today. Item five is personnel. Item A is to approve the routine action.
Morning Commissioners, Jen Addicks.
Good morning Jenna. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second for routine action. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item B is a presentation of Minnehaha County Diversity Committee Annual Report. Jenny Addicks.
Good morning. As you know, each year the Diversity Committee presents a brief presentation about its activities over the past 12 months. And the Diversity Committee is a committee that meets quarterly. We review county employee demographic information and discuss opportunities for increasing diversities and working with diverse populations throughout our county. One of the primary functions of the Minnehaha County Diversity Committee is of course the affirmative action plan which we presented to you in January. And then also just to act as a resource to the county and county departments on different diversity issues. Our community members for, that are currently serving terms until June 2014 are Wes Garcia from Killian Community College, Pat Grupa from the Minnehaha County Human Services Department. She's our Veterans Services Officer. And Jenny Logan from the South Dakota Coalition of Citizens with Disabilities, Mary Patterson formerly from the Veterans Administration Hospital, and Janil Watkins who is also from the South Dakota Coalition of Citizens with Disabilities. And then our Diversity Committee also includes Commissioner Kelly as our HR liaison and two members of the HR office, myself and our Director Carrie Deber. I'd now like to introduce Wes Garcia from our Diversity Committee and he will give you a brief summary of the activities over the last 12 months.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good to be here this morning. No. Oh. Once again, we are ready to present our affirmative action plan to the Commissioners, but also we've done a number of activities this past year. We've had a food drive and we've also done our annual Native American Resource Fair that has had very good results. Now each year on October 10th, we hold that at the Multicultural Center and we have another number of community services coming presented material as well so that the Native American community can be aware of resources in the community. And then we had our Super Bowl, if I pronounce that right, food drive. It was raising canned goods, specifically soup, for the Minnehaha County Food Basket. And we raised, as you can see, 185 for the 49ers and 169 for the, the other team. Ravens. 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 I'm not a football fan, so I don't get involved with that. But total, we took in 354 items donated for the food pantry this past year. Some of the things that we look at when we review the affirmative action plan is the workforce analysis, job group analysis, comparison of incumbent and workforce availability. We like to see, or we've tried in the past to see that the numbers employed by the county as far as minorities match the number in the population. Sometimes we've been able to do that, other times we've not been able to do that. But we've been close overall. And we have tried to get postings of new jobs out to the community as best we can so that we can attract minority people who are qualified for those openings. And as we finish off, I'd like to share two stories with you, if I may. You know, we've become so technologically savvy that sometimes we forget to have narrative stories. And I think stories are important for who we are as human beings. And one happened to me many, many years ago, I won't tell you how long, when I was a senior in high school. I was dating a young girl for a number of months and would go to church with her, would go to her family's house for dinner and everything. And one day I went to pick her up for a date and I was greeted at the door by her father, very nice man as far as I knew, because I'd known him at different locations, at church and at dinner. And he said, "Well, you can't go out with Cheryl today." And I said, "Well, is she not well? Is she not feeling good? Can I see her?" "No, you may not see her, but you can't go out." "Well, what's the problem?" And he looked at me and said, "I found out your last name is Garcia and I don't want my daughter dating any lazy, no-good Mexican." So there is diversity, or lack of diversity, in some communities unfortunately. And some of that we can't do anything about. But one thing we can do as far as the Diversity Committee is to help the staff become more well-versed at working with people of color in our own community. Because one thing that happened to me here in Sioux Falls, and I'm not saying it happened in the county building, but I was handing an application for something, might have been a license, might have been a building permit or something of that nature. And of course, at the top it says your name. And she looked at me, or he looked at me and said, "Can you speak English?" Just assuming that the last name's Garcia, I don't speak English. And we need to move away from that type of narrow-minded views of people and say, "Everybody is like me and we all speak English unless you show me otherwise." So with that, I leave you that thought for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
And I just want to say thank you to the whole Diversity Committee for their commitment and dedication to raising awareness here for diversity issues within the county. And we really think it's valuable to have a good, a good wide variety of people on the Diversity Committee to help us, you know, maintain and increase our diversity awareness. So. And I'm happy to answer any questions too, if you have any.
Any questions? All right. This was just a presentation, so thank you Jenny.
Thanks.
There are no application for abatement today and no notices and requests and there are no planning and zoning notices. The next item is petition for compromise of lien. John Pecus.
Thank you. This is on DPO number 81632. The Auditor's Office has received an application for a compromise of lien from the current applicant. The county aid lien was for public defender services in the amount of $813.80. There's no real estate involved with this particular request. The applicant speaks little English and so he did need the assistance of an interpreter. The applicant was surprised at the amount of the billing. Apparently, the applicant pled guilty after a dispositional conference with the State's Attorney's Office. Because of that, she believed that the billing would not be that high. Apparently, she did contact a private attorney at the beginning of her case and was told he would charge roughly $400, that was an estimate. She and her family did not have the funds to pay that amount and so naturally she turned to the public defender's office. The applicant lives with her mother, father, and three younger sisters. She is unemployed. The applicant indicated that the family depends on her father's social security disability payments as well as food stamps. And apparently, her mother is unable to work due to knee problems. The oldest of the children, she is the primary healthcare provider to her parents and of course, her younger sisters. The applicant claims the lien of this size is an economic hardship due to her unemployment and her financial position of her family. She's requesting a compromise and release of the lien in full payment upon $200. She will need most likely the full year to make the payment and she has made a payment of approximately $5 on the lien. And of course, the applicant has requested that an interpreter be present here. I don't know if she's present here today.
Okay.
And she can address the commission from where she's standing. She doesn't have to identify herself. She doesn't have to come to the podium if she wishes to address the commission. The State's Attorney did indicate that there were a variety of different court proceedings that took place in this particular case. And there wasn't just one dispositional conference. To give you an idea about how the process involves, typically you have what would be the initial appearance. And then, of course, you have the opportunity to enter a plea at that time or you can request an attorney or a public defender. After that, you then proceed to what's known as a dispositional conference. Apparently, in this particular instance, there was a, several dispositional conferences that were set. And I believe there was an indictment related to a felony charge which also incorporates the need of having an arraignment and then also new dispositional conference set by the court. So there was a variety of different procedures that took place in this particular case. And once again, the public defender's office did of course bill for the time they were involved. So anyway, with that being said, I'm open to any questions. And of course, the applicant of course, obviously would like to address the commission. First, does anybody have any questions for me?
John, so what does a typical private attorney charge for, per hour so to speak?
Oh, well, that rate is actually, I'd say right now about $175 an hour. And what we do, at least at the UJS, is the UJS typically charges, I believe, two-thirds of what the average pay for the attorney is in South Dakota. So it's subsidized. We already discount that. And I believe the current amount is $87.50, but I may be incorrect on that.
$87.50 for the public defender's office at this point?
Yes.
Yes. Any other questions for John? This would be an opportunity, if the applicant would like to speak, like John said, you don't have to come to the podium, you can just say whatever you want to say from your seat. And you don't have to give her name. You don't have to give her name.
And, you know, as she just said that her brother, she then afford to pay $813.40 for the public defender's office. And she would like to consider the family financial situation.
Any comments or questions from the Commission? Commissioner Barth?
I would just comment that oftentimes, people who make regular payments, say over some period of time, you know, $5 every three months for two years, then it becomes easier for us to compromise the lien.
Any other?
I'd like to say a little more.
She said, "I would like to reduce the amount of my debt so I can pay even small payments because right now I don't have any money to pay this debt on me. Plus, in my culture, we don't like to have a debt holding on my neck for some time."
Commissioner Barth?
Again, I think that, I cannot support reducing it at this time. But if we had a history of making payments, it would be easier for me.
Any?
Yes, she already started paying the papers.
Commissioner Kelly, you have a comment?
Well, there's no real estate involved in this, as I understand. It's, I can't support the forgiveness either. I do think that if small payments, $5 payments can be made regularly, I think that would suffice. And perhaps when they get down to the $400 level or somewhere, we could look at this thing again. But right now, the bill was incurred and I think there's an expectation to pay and she was under that understanding when she got with the city or the public defender. And therefore, I will not support it.
Any other comments from you? Okay. Any other comments from the Commission?
I'll make a motion for no action.
You have a motion for no action and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously for no action. Means the lien will stay as it is at this time.
The next item is opportunity for public comment.
This is the time when the public can speak about anything that is not on the present agenda. And I see we have someone coming forward. Good morning, Bob Colby.
Good morning Commissioners, I'm Bob Colby. Excuse me, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I've had some discussions with people relating to your quote-unquote "embalming mobile." The general public that I, oh, the few people I've talked to aren't absolutely clear on what that particular need is. The feeling that most that I've talked with, and you've heard from Rick Newby, that he thought this ought to be a state endeavor. I've talked to others who thought this might be something as far as embalming that would relate to the mortuary community, the undertakers, that they would subsidize something like this for state use. But, and maybe Mr. DeYoung who's here, if you have a tragedy or an emergency where a large number of people have been killed, it would seem that you don't need an embalming mobile, you need a refrigeration unit because you're going to have to suspend the embalming for autopsies possibly, or later identification for people who may not have family in the immediate community who can visually identify a person. And if there's real tragedy, they may have to go through a DNA process. Embalming is a thing that also has certain cultural and religious connotations that you have to be sensitive to for people who may be killed in a major disaster that would strike any large populated community. So it would seem that, to be crass, a refrigerated truck would be more in need to take the deceased and keep them in suspended animation, or suspend their decomposition as it were, until you have come to some resolution on who they are, why they are there, and what embalming procedures might be used. Because some cultures, the body would be buried within 24 hours of the death. Others look upon embalming as an invasive thing into the body and you might get yourself in some kind of legal problems, being insensitive to someone else's funery practices. So I think that the embalming mobile is a, though, an idea of having something for a disaster is appropriate, it's more of a refrigeration problem than it is an embalming problem. And that's the take that I'm getting from some of the people that I've talked with. And maybe Mr. DeYoung would be more capable of speaking to this because it seems like you're, you're kind of leapfrogging from a disaster to an end product without looking at that middle section. So that was just the comment that I had from a few people and listening to some of the radio talk shows, et cetera. But I just thought, it seems like this needs a little more discussion and the, and embalming mobile just doesn't sound appropriate. Thank you.
I think West River does have a refrigeration truck and this will be nation, I mean, not nationwide used, but I'm going to let Mr. DeYoung address this issue. We have talked about this and probably just wasn't reported well enough what direction we were going.
Commissioner, sorry to cut you off there. Commissioner Heiburger. Lyndy Young, Emergency Management. Commissioner Heiburger is right. Basically, as we look at the state of South Dakota and mass fatalities, this is something that was brought from the federal government to the state government. And then, as a result of statute in the state of South Dakota, the state of South Dakota doesn't have coroners. They don't have forensic pathologists. Those responsibilities are put down on the county to take care of those. So in the event of a event that requires the services, it's responsibility of the county to go and spend the dollars to identify these folks. As a result of that, several years ago, obviously you know, the county went out and found Dr. Snell, who's the forensic pathologist that works for the county along with the health systems here to do those autopsies that you most often rely on for criminal events, those type of things. One of the other things that he has in his background is being part of the disaster system. Back in Alabama, he was an integral part in the state process. As we looked at the state of South Dakota and at the forensic pathologist, we saw that there was one part-time in Rapid City, our full-time forensic pathologist in Sioux Falls, a couple up in Rapid, or the Minneapolis area, one up in Fargo, and then a couple down in Omaha and in the, in the Des Moines area. So we took a whole region approach with the goal that the state gave us and said, "What would make this go?" Rapid City or Pennington County last year purchased, or in the last several years purchased a refrigeration, as Mr. Colby was talking about, a refrigeration unit. We have purchased or are going to purchase the embalming slash, and I forget the term, autopsy trailer to go with it. And in the event that there is an incident that requires, the services, West River and East River will team up and come to do that. We have, as we identified, both Dr. Snell and myself, in our yearly goals for department heads, we're about three-quarters of the way done with our plan. And that'll be shared towards you. And then, all of this equipment, once again, is paid for from a grant from Health and CDC, from the federal level down to the state because they don't have the capability to do it. They've run it down to the locals in South Dakota here. And November, we're in the process of getting the NTSB folks to come in. They'll do a one-day class in partnership with Sanford Health here for all the, all the people that need to be there. And they'll do a one-day class from NTSB. And then FEMA will do a subsequent class on the 6th and 7th so that we have a broad spectrum of how these assets and tools work. Now you ask, "When may this happen?" And some of the other things, that Commissioner that Bob Colby talked about, you know, we, not too long ago, there was a plane crash in South Dakota, up in the northeast part, the Payne Stewart plane crash, that would be an incident. The difference in that, that incident is we know all the folks that are there. One of the things that I fear about is a 15-passenger van of migrant workers that we have in this area moving from area to area, unfortunately crash and burn on the interstate. It would literally take weeks for your coroner to do all the work he needs to do to unravel all the pieces to figure that out. And that's our responsibility. And he doesn't have the storage space out at the current morgue just to leave that work sit aside while he does that. He needs to be able to go in and do all these works. So we're trying to, with the help of federal dollars, lay out the pieces so that unfortunately, if an event does happen like this in South Dakota, East River, West River can come together, get those two teams together, or two forensic experts, and make sure it work out of a tragedy.
Any questions for Lynn?
And, you know, I understand where Commissioner, or where Bob Colby is coming from and even some of you folks. But unfortunately, as we've seen lately, death and destruction is part of my job. We are often the ones where it just falls to the feet of the county and we have to take care of it. If we don't prepare for it, when it happens, the citizens will come back and ask you why you didn't support this, why you didn't. And so that's why we don't.
Lynn, I have one question. Could you just repeat again the funding for, it was federal, state? And was there, what was there a match in local?
Currently, the only, or the federal funding, this is an overall goal of the state of South Dakota, they send their grant and the feds, the feds approve it. So federal funding right now is $50,000 for the equipment. And that comes from the feds to the state. And then the last couple of weeks, two weeks ago I think it was, you signed the grant application. We're in the turnover process of that now. So that'll come. For the training, it's really similar to that. They pay for all the training because, you know, these events don't just happen, you know, on air bases or all these other stuff where the federal government takes care of it. They happen in local South Dakota and local and states and other parts of the country. So we have to have the ability to, to go in there and take care of that. But yes, it's 100% federal funding. The only part that's local is the time and effort of your emergency management staff, the sheriff's office, the fire rescue, the police department, all of those other agencies that would normally be working in this type of an environment.
Thank you.
One question. Lyndy, have any idea what the ongoing costs will be, insurance and maintenance and?
You know, it's minimal with this type of equipment because we hope that it never does roll. So there'll be some ongoing costs, I would think, $500 to $1,000 a year for that. We haven't completely looked at that. And other grants that the state has, they actually pay for some of that. We're working on that process now. As you know, with the federal budget process, some of that is in limbo. But we're looking at that also.
Can you do outside storage with this thing?
As everything, inside storage is much better because we're talking about medical equipment and all these other things. Most likely, it'll be stored outside for the, for the time being because nobody has inside storage for it that we know of. So, but we are actively looking for that also.
So, okay, so we probably will get a request for either constructing or renting an inside storage facility?
Yeah, we're looking for something that we can make workable for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, public comment? Okay, I guess we'll move on.
We're on to regular business. Item number 10 is consider a request from Tri Valley School District to provide severe weather warning siren near the school district site. Mike Lodmell, if you would just introduce yourself and your address.
Excuse me, Mike Lodmell. I'm from 104 East 9th Street, Crook, South Dakota. I'm the Superintendent of the Tri Valley School District. With me today is Mike McRavy, School Board President. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here this morning. The Tri Valley School District is located approximately six miles south of Colton in a very unique rural setting. We're comprised of approximately 830 students and 100 staff members. At 930 people that can be in our building at any given time, from what I can find, that makes us larger than the Minnehaha towns of Humboldt, Valley Springs, and Colton. We're asking consideration for severe weather siren to please be placed at our district site for the safety of our staff, students, and patrons. And thank you.
Questions from the Commission? Mr. Kelly?
What procedures right now do you currently have for warning people that are using facilities?
It's a good question. We currently utilize weather radios and then obviously the internet intercoms system is what we use if we're, would be in session at that point in time. My real large concern is after-school hours. You know, I don't think we're unique and probably our buildings are used 80 to 90 percent of the time. It might be that parent who has fifth grade basketball practice for a team camp coming up, which might be at 7 o'clock at night and I might not be there to warn anybody. So in those instances, very, very minimal.
So with the weather radio, I mean, generally, you can look outside and see that we're going to have an issue. But with the weather radio or with television, is that ability available, say, in the gymnasium or something like that if a weather alert would come out?
We do not have weather radios in the gymnasium, nor does our district have capable television. So we're kind of limited in that area.
So where is the weather radio now, in the principal's office?
In the Superintendent's office, correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question for Mr. McRavy.
If you would just identify yourself and your address, please.
Mike McRavy, Chairman of Tri Valley School Board, 47081257 St. Crook, South Dakota.
I guess a concern that we have, of course, would be that, you know, other entities will be wanting all of this. Does the school board have any money that they could help us defray the cost on this?
We just now- We just now have, are entering into an opt-out, so our funds are quite limited. We, you know, I guess we're open to a proposal. We can, you know, I mean, it's the safety of our children and the public. And when a lot of time during the day, you know, as Mr. Lodmell stated, we are, have a population greater than cities in the county. And it is unique, because it is set rural. Just seems logical as a safety feature to have a warning there.
Thank you.
We understand somebody has to pay for it. Thank you.
I would, as chairman, is everybody done making comments? I would like to suggest that we maybe form a committee and look at this and look at some of the different options. Emergency management has given us a few options. Lynn, did you want to comment at all? Yep, please.
Lynn Young, Emergency Management. You know, I just want to congratulate the school district for looking at some of these things and bringing it forward. I don't think we've ever had this type of discussion. And hopefully, where this came out of, or maybe where the idea was, is on May 8th, we had a group of some of the commissioners and school officials and community officials together at Tri Valley, and we looked at, we basically table-topped with the sheriff's office and myself, what happens if, what happens this? And it was weather events, it was a school intruder program. So that's exactly what this is supposed to do, is identify shortfalls and hazards that we have in our community and how we make those better. As far as an outdoor warning siren goes within this area, I did provide the commission with a couple of different options based on their request. Initial cost, or initial estimates for an outdoor warning siren are anywhere from about $17,500 to $20,000 for the initial purchase, plus about $500 for yearly maintenance, which includes the battery systems and the maintenance and those type of things. And typically, in the past, the county has not, or about 20 years ago, the county actually got out of owning sirens. At that point, they were used under the civil defense for nuclear incidents and those type of things. So we got out of the business. That was transitioned over into the communities, so the siren would be owned by a community or another government entity. Since then, we've only worked with incorporated communities that had the capability to maintain these systems, because at $500 to $1,000 typically, rural housing subdivisions and some of these other places are good to go for the first year and the second year. But after the third year, maintenance falls off, and then there's no plan to upgrade and everything. So we haven't been out working with the rural subdivisions just to plot these out there, because as you look at our rural community out to the east, there are several rural subdivisions. The Village of Corson and, excuse me, Rowena don't have coverage. So there's a lot of areas out there, and it's kind of a policy direction is, do we want to start putting these or working with those areas in there? And three or four years down the road, when that association who decided that they wanted one doesn't fulfill their requirements, then that falls back on the county to do this with. So just some of that overview within there. I did lay out a couple of other units, including the information that several years ago, over 300 weather radios were distributed by the county to all the schools, daycare, congreg- care facilities, all of those in the county. So that would also be an option. They're about $50. Currently, our number option three, using the weather radio to distribute the information, as you've heard, that may or may not work in this situation, because it may not be manned. Once again, with the advent of smartphone technology, there are certainly different things that can be done there, both for those people that are using and for not. There is a system out, it's a tone alert radio system, that could be potentially purchased and wired right into their current PA system. And then that would potentially go off even when it's not, even when the office, as Mr. Lodmell discussed, is not staffed. And that might be an option that's cheaper. And then I walked into some funding options that I have, and reviewed some of those in the past. I would suggest that those are looked at also. The one, there is 100%, obviously, Homeland Security Grant. That deadline is April 23rd, so I would suggest that if Commissioner Heiberg's suggestion is taken, that we move quickly, so we could move into some of those other funding options. I do want to, I did add a map into your packet. And the blue circles are the current areas in the county, and I'm upside down there, I'm sorry. The blue circles are, and I'm still upside down.
Yeah, you're still.
Anyways, can't all straighten me out? But, there you go. We need the auto right, like some of the other things have. Anyways, the blue circles, and this is just a small screenshot of part of the county, but the blue circles indicate that, indicate areas of the county that are already covered. And as you can see to the north side of the map, if we're looking at the green one, the green one's the current Tri Valley location, and that's what potential coverage would be within that rural area. IGC to the north is Colton, to the east is Lyons, and then Crooks and Hartford and everything. So it certainly would be an area out in the county that would have significant coverage in their campus. And the current systems that we would recommend, if that's the way that's going, you know, would cover a large area of rural Minnehaha County. So you can see what that would do. The system would operate in conjunction with current county policies, if this is the way that's decided. And that would mean it was only operational during tornado events. We don't operate the sirens for any other severe weather events, just because we've thought, we've taken the approach in the past, that if you operate it for every severe thunderstorm, people don't pay attention. And unfortunately, what we've seen in the past is, what our tornado sirens do is bring people out to look at the tornado, and as a result, they get hit in the head with a two-by-four and die. So that's the other aspect of tornado sirens. But this is just an FYI of what it looks like currently and what it may look like if that's the way it goes. So I would echo Commissioner Heiberg's discussion point, that maybe we do take this back and take a look at it in a small group format over the next several weeks, and bring back this, a recommendation to both Mr. Lodmell's board and myself to this board, so.
Thank you, Lynn. If that's okay with the commission?
Well, I'd have a motion.
A motion?
I'd move to refer this back to the emergency manager director, who can form a committee with two commissioners on it, and come up with a recommendation as to what to do with this and this whole policy.
I have a motion and a second with a comment from Commissioner Bart.
I think this is a great idea, and I don't think we should mess around with weeks of meetings and months of discussion. I'd like to get it done before the end of, you know, tornado season here. And so if we could move on this expeditiously, I'd really appreciate it.
And I think it will be. If it's a small enough committee, it isn't too hard to make appointments. And with that being said, I think we will leave it in the capable hands of emergency management. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Okay.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item 11 is to authorize the chairman to sign amendment to the joint security protection agreement between the South Dakota Department of Military and Veterans Affairs and Minnehaha County. Keith Winyan.
Good morning, Commissioner. Keith Winyan, Air Guard Division Supervisor, presenting the amendment to the joint security protection agreement. This amendment notes a deduction of $36,000 to our fiscal 2013 budget. This deduction will not affect Air Guard Division operations, name it. So it's just a deduction of $36,000. Is there any questions for you?
Any questions for Mr. Winyan? Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the agreement.
Say it.
Have a motion and a second to authorize the chair to sign the agreement. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Item 12 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between the South Dakota Department of Transportation and Minnehaha County for the planned inspection of the precast concrete beams for Structure 50-150-202, the Ellis Bridge project. Tom Wilsley.
Tom Wilsley, Highway Department. This is an agreement, we did the same thing with Baltic, excuse me, with the Baltic structure. DOT has personnel that are very experienced and very good at the inspection. We do not have people that are experienced with it. And to utilize a consulting engineer would cost us a lot more. We think this is a very good, it worked very well on our last project, so we're wanting to do it again on the Ellis structure.
Okay. We have a motion?
So moved.
A motion to approve the inspection. A second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 13 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and HDR Engineering for Construction and Management Services for Structure 50150-202, the Ellis Bridge project. Tom Wilsley.
HDR did the design on this project, and we would like to enter an agreement with them to do the construction management. Once again, this is, as we did with the Baltic structure, and it has worked very well for us on that project, and I see no reason why I wouldn't here.
Any questions for Mr. Wilsley? Commissioner Bart?
I'm supportive of this, but at the same time, we do a lot of business with HDR. Are there other companies that do this work?
Yes, we're using, we're utilizing Bros Engineering up on 121. We're using CD, yeah, what's that? IDG. They're doing design for our bridges on 121. And CDS, they're doing a structure up north. So yeah, we're spreading it around as best we can.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to force you to sign that, Madam Chair.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Say it.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 14 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and HDR Engineering for survey, design, and plan preparation for a deck overlay for Structure 50-300-118, located on County Highway 109, two miles south and one mile west of Garretson. Tom Wilsley.
Once again, we're utilizing HDR for this project, because they have people that have experience with this type of a structure, type of work. The overlays needed due to severe spalling of the deck, and it's a rather unique type of work that needs to be done. So.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll just go from there.
Say it.
Have a motion and a second to approve the contract. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 15 is to.
Keep her going, huh?
Keep her going. Item 15, authorize the chairman to sign change order number one in the amount of $23,369.68 for Project MC121STR-12, replacement of Structures 50-240-069 and 50-240-073, Arrow's Road Bridges. Tom Wilsley.
This is the structure that I've mentioned that Bros has done with us. Excuse me. When we tore into that bridge, we found old abutments buried behind the existing abutments that we had. And part of this, the last item, is the extra work is just the cost for removing and hauling it away. The other thing we found was a very, very large scour hole underneath the old structure that had silted back in with very unstable material. We had to remove all of that to get some stability. We had a couple of options on this to, it got, the scour hole went underneath one of our wing walls, and we were concerned with stability of that wing wall. The best option after discussion was to cast a concrete apron, as is pretty common to do with box culverts. And that's basically about, of this, that's about $13,000 worth of this CCO. That is basically an insurance policy for us to save that wing wall. They had an experience once with one out in Hutchinson County, where they put the rock aprons in, and they flushed out, and they lost their wing walls. This was a concern here, because the water velocity going through that box is quite high.
Any questions for Mr. Wilsley? I'm wondering, do you have any idea how long since that bridge was replaced and those abutments all buried?
Oh, I have no clue. They were behind the south abutment, we found two abutments. So it's two previous structures.
They're just buried?
It's, that they just buried them behind it. They've been there a while. Plus, we found a chunk where our crew must have gone in and filled a scour hole with concrete. It was about eight yards of concrete that they filled that hole with. Just getting that out of there was a trek. Move to approve the change order.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 16 is to authorize the chairman to sign a temporary construction easement, utility certificate, letting authorization, right-of-way certificate, and encroachment survey certification for South Dakota Department of Transportation, Project BRO 805064, PCN 032U, Spook Road Bridge Replacement Project. D.J. Boothey.
Good morning, Commissioner D.J. Boothey, Highway Superintendent. Suppose I could have had Tom take care of this one, too. This project?
He has a good record of getting them done.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for you to chime in and say you moved to approve. This project is part of the state bridge program. It's the one project that we have had on there. I think it was scheduled and rescheduled for construction several of the last couple, few years. It's southeast of Brandon on a township road, Valley Springs Township. And it's in very poor condition. We have completed all of the local government requirements for letting the project and completing the project during the design phase. And this series of documents is certifications and easement forms that are required, that the county signs and provide to the state prior to the state letting the project. And so, as Cindy said, there's two temporary construction easements. One of them is including $600 in damages for the loss of three trees that the county will pay, and the other one is no cost. There's a utility certification, which basically certifies that the private utilities have been looked at and/or relocated in order to prevent any problems during construction. Letting authorization, which is giving the state the go-ahead that they can let the project, and we will, we will match 20% of the construction cost for the project. Right-of-way certificate, which says that we've looked at the right-of-way and affirmed that there is appropriate amount of right-of-way for the completion of the project. And an encroachment survey certification, which says that there is not anything in the right-of-way that's encroaching, that should not be there, that would prevent anything on the project from being completed the way that it's designed. So with that, if you have any questions, I can answer them now.
Any questions for Mr. Boothey?
Make a motion to authorize the chair to sign this.
Say it.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 17 is to authorize the chairman to sign Minnehaha County jail per diem contracts with the counties of Aurora, Brookings, Duell, Gregory, Hanson, Hutchinson, Hyde, Gerald, Kingsbury, Lake, McCook, Minor, Moody, Pennington, Sandboard, and Turner. Warden Jeff Grummer.
Good morning, Jeff Grummer, I'm the warden at the jail. We're just asking to extend these contracts for another year. All of these 16 contracts, the rate was adjusted last year. To extend them another year, we'd put them on the same adjustment schedule as Lincoln County, so we'd have all of our county contracts on the same schedule at that point.
And that cost is $80.20 per day?
For inmates, other than work release, $35 for work release.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Kelly?
On the work release, the county pays, sending county pays us $35, and do we also charge the prisoner?
Typically, the prisoner pays. The county will allow them to do that, just do their work release time here, and they pay.
And what do the Minnehaha County work release people pay?
It's not that much, and I don't have the number right off the top.
Is it about that same amount?
It's a little bit less, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I would move approval.
Make a motion to approve. Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item 18 is consider a motion to supplement $7,411.88 from the general fund to the state's attorney budget, ASN 15691, data processing equipment, representing reimbursement from the South Dakota Drug Control Fund. Ken McFermont.
Commissioners, last week, you authorized the state's attorney to accept this particular
Commissioners, last week you authorized the state's attorney to accept this particular grant, and he gave you a list of technology equipment that he wanted to buy using those grant funds. This is simply the authorization and the motion to specifically supplement that, the amount of that grant, $7,411.88 directly to the state's attorney's budget so that they can actually start purchasing the equipment. So we ask for your approval.
Any questions for Ken?
I'd move approval.
Motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 19 is to consider submittal of a grant application for part-time help to the South Dakota Council of Juvenile Services for JDAI expansion efforts. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, as you know, we've received grant funding for, to help support the activities of our JDAI coordinator, Aaron Sertzka, for the last few years through the Council of Juvenile Services. That particular grant was due to expire in June of this year, at the end of June. And I, in fact, I have just submitted what will be the last reimbursement request under the current grant for our coordinator's salary. We thought that the grant was going to be over in June, so it came as kind of a surprise to us when we were notified earlier this month that the council had another $15,000 to be applied for coordinator's salary. We had used, and again, you know, we had thought that the money was going to be done by the end of June. We had made arrangements for the county to pick up the rest of the salary through the end of 2013, and we have done that within the commission office budget. So when this grant opportunity became available, we made a pitch towards the council saying, "Look, we've already funded this position through the end of the year. This grant funding may be considered to be supplanting." So we had an idea that perhaps we could use the money to apply for part-time help to assist the coordinator in another grant that we've got going on right now, which is a $25,000 grant to help expand JDAI into the First Circuit and into Lincoln County. And that, so we pitched the idea at the last council meeting and before we would go through the work of applying for the application, and they thought that would be okay. Well, as it turns out, at that same meeting, and that there's going to be a switch on coordinating JDAI activities throughout the state and a shift away from the Council of Juvenile Services, and that money is now going to go over to the UJS for control and to help supervise JDAI in the state of South Dakota as we go forward. And so, in this transition period between the CJS and the UJS, there are some uncertainties that we need to work out about what are, you know, what is the UJS plan now going to look like moving JDAI forward? And so, at this juncture, and given the time parameters of the grant to help expand activities into the First Circuit, we're going to recommend that we not apply for the grant for the part-time help. We don't believe we can probably expend it within the timeframe that we need to. And the fact is, you know, while it might be tempting to say, "Look, let's apply it to the full-time coordinator's salary," I made a very strong pitch that we didn't need it for the full-time coordinator's salary, and so I just wouldn't quite feel right about making the application for that purpose. I want to reiterate, we still are committed to working under the current grant of $25,000 to help expand activities into the First Circuit and the Lincoln County. Much of that money, we think, will be okay as we move forward to JDAI, you know, coordinating with the UJS, because we'll be using that money primarily to get supplies and training materials to help conduct the workshops that are going to be needed in the First Circuit and in Lincoln County in order to help expand JDAI efforts. So we think that we can do that under the parameters of our current funding and don't need the $15,000 grant funding for part-time help as we originally pitched. And so we would recommend that we not make application for that. So we just think that if we did that, given the uncertainties of how we transition, it would just be an unwarranted expenditure of grant funds. Plus, this gives the Council of Juvenile Services an opportunity to redirect and repurpose those monies into other areas that would help further their work. So that would be our recommendation at this time.
Any questions for Ken?
Comment?
Comment? Mr. Kelly?
Ken, I want to compliment you on this, because way too often, grant money's hanging out there, and it's like low-lying fruit, and we just, or low-hanging fruit, and we just grab it. The fact that we don't need this money is probably a very valid argument for not, not even putting a grant in, and I think it was a good move on our part. I think we should look at all grants that way. Do you need the thing? And if you don't need it, don't take it. I'd have a motion if nobody else has any other comments.
Any other comments?
I would just say that I also, I agree with Mr. Kelly that, or Commissioner Kelly, that, you know, we've looked at this thoroughly, had intended to take it originally, but with the changes that have come forward, I think this is a good decision for us, too, in that CGS can use their money as they further their other projects and stuff, and that we will just continue to see how this grows out, so. Did you want to make a motion?
I have a motion to take no action on the grant.
Have a motion to take no action on the grant.
I thought it was, well, okay.
Have a motion and a second.
Just for point of clarification, I thought we were considering submittal of the grant amp for part-time help.
We were, we're, I'm recommending that we not submit that grant application at all for $15,000.
All right, okay. All right.
So we have a motion and a second to, what did you say? What did you say, take no action?
Take no action.
To submit the grant.
To submit the grant. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 20 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between South Dakota Department of Social Services and Minnehaha County for clinically managed residential detoxification program. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, as you know, we currently receive state funds for the operation of our clinically managed residential detoxification program. That current contract expired at the end of May, and we have received a new contract from the state that would provide funding to help manage that program from June 1 of 2013 through May 31 of 2014. Excuse me. The current contract that expired on May 31st was adjusted a couple different times through the course of the year, and ended up that it was in the amount of $106,210. What the state is proposing and has set aside for the coming contract year is $127,220 in state funds. As you know, that's just one leg of the stool for detox. City also provides us $210,000 to help manage the detox program, and the county is then responsible for any balance. The official budget for detox this year is $716,778 through the end of this particular year. I know, and we had a very, I'll just say, a very excellent article about, in the Argus today, about some of the issues that this county is going through with detox and how that detox program may look next year. I, with that in mind, and the state knows very well that we are having these kind of discussions, and we've had conversations with the state, and I have confirmed with the state that if you do, in fact, enter into this agreement to accept, to act, to continue to access some of these dollars to help offset the cost of detox in our county under this new contract, that in the event that you do change directions come the first of the year, that they will be more than willing to work with us so that we're not bound to continue this if you change your model before the expiration of this contract year, and that here. So this would give you the opportunity, if you approve this, to continue to access some of the monies that the state does provide to help offset the cost of the detox program. And of course, with that in mind, while you're accepting that money, you're still under the accreditation program and plan and requirements of the state as you continue to review your model.
Any questions for Ken? Commissioner Kelly?
Not a question, but a comment. There is, item 11 is termination agreement, and there is the right of either party to terminate within 30 days' written notice, so.
Correct.
Thank you.
With that in mind, I'd move to approve the contract.
Motion to approve the contract?
I'll second it. I have a question for Ken.
Second with a question.
Ken, you know, in detox, do we have citizens coming in from the other rural communities, or is it primarily people from Sioux Falls that are taken there?
Right now, we do, on occasion, we do take people in from other counties if there is a bed available, you know, in detox.
I guess I was wondering if we have them from Lyons or Del Rapids, or if they're mainly from, say, Phillips Avenue?
Oh. I will tell you, the vast majority, the vast majority of the clientele that we operate in the detox do, in fact, come within the city of Sioux Falls, and that, they do. But, I mean, there are occasions, we do get residents, you know, from other parts of this county. We do take other clients from out of county on a space-available basis, which is very rare, and we very rarely get a detox person from another county. We also have a contract with the feds for U.S. probation, and that's only used sparingly as well. So the vast majority of the beds are taken up from folks right here in good old Sioux Falls. And then, of course, with the city and that portion of the city of Sioux Falls within Lincoln County because of the attribution of the city of Sioux Falls to the program.
Any other questions for Ken? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, another comment, it's important to note that not all the people in detox are street people or the homeless, as we know, that they, they come from all walks of life, and even though a significant number of them come off the street, there are others involved.
Any other comments? Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 21, our Minnehaha County Commissioner liaison reports.
Does anyone have a liaison report? Seeing none, we'll move on to, is there any new business? Is there any? Oh, I have one, one new business.
Yeah, just a point of information, because I know it's a topic of, people have asked about. The South Dakota Association of County Commissioners is getting, you know, has a deadline when they review resolutions that will be submitted for consideration at our state convention in September. Both districts and counties who want to submit resolutions for consideration at the annual convention must have those submitted by the end of July. And that, so with that in mind, what we will do is I will have an item on next week's agenda to solicit ideas, comments from this group about topics that you would like to see addressed for potential legislative changes to be considered by our state association. We'll talk a little bit about that. I'll get a sense from you what kind of resolutions you want to see. Robert and I will craft those resolutions and bring them back to you for formal consideration at a later meeting prior to the July deadline for submittal, and that, to the association. And that, so that's the process that we'll use to flesh out, and that, what resolutions you would like to submit.
I follow up on what Ken, this morning Kyle and Robert and I met just discussing the tax-exempt status and the study group that we've got on the state level. And Kyle is going to be at the district meeting and discuss this briefly. We're finding out that no action might be the best place. The last time they had a hearing, a full-fledged deal at the legislature 10 years ago, they led the whole thing, they left everything in place and added another tax exemption. So we've decided perhaps it's not the best battle to fight at this point, but we're going to accumulate some other information, and then I'm going to send a report out, and I will include it, Commissioner.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for Ken? Any old business? Any old business? That being said, we will adjourn with, into executive session for personnel to have a motion.
That's my motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn into executive session. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.